We are going to get going. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Later.
Yo.
Yes.
Talking. Well, good afternoon to you all and good afternoon to Sergeant Wright in the gallery. We will start this session of the ninth of September. Regular council meeting by land acknowledgement. The town of Carstens acknowledges that we are located on traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. You have an agenda and you have a few extra documents given to you. So I need someone to move the adoption, councillor Jensen?
May I come in? A motion to adopt the agenda for September ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right councillor, Sergeant Wright. You know, maybe I was trying to recruit.
Hey Brian?
It was gonna be a surprise.
All right, Sergeant Wright, go ahead.
Thank you, Miss Mayor and council. Just as this will likely be my last time addressing this council, I think. I just wanted to thank everybody for your help, cooperation and ideas over the last four years. It's been fantastic working with everybody and I greatly appreciate the support and input from this council. It's been absolutely invaluable at times and I think we've done some good things for the community over the last four years. So thank you for your cooperation with the local police. With that. Just, I guess what council is aware, we do have a new, I guess, commanding officer in the province of Alberta, Trevor Drew. He was formerly from the Southern Alberta District, so we're kind of optimistic about that because he's. He kind of intimately knows some of the challenges and whatnot we face down here, so we think that's gonna be good for us going forward. He is kind of newly appointed in the position, he's only been there for about the last four to six months and I think maybe even three of those have been informal.
He did a presentation, if you don't mind me, he did a presentation to mayors and reeves in Tabor in June.
Right, okay, perfect. Yeah, and he's quite well spoken, you know, articulate, right? I think he's gonna be good for, he'll be good for the province, but you know, just being from down here, it's kind of nice. Because when we touch him up with an issue, he knows exactly what we're talking about, so that's good stuff. As far as our annual performance plan is concerned, under those three main umbrellas, again, the traffic safety impaired driving enforcement and the Traffic Safety Act, crime reduction and community engagement activities. All these are already at the meet or exceed level. The only one that I'm kind of tracking right now will be kind of foot patrols as we go through into the winter. As well as just impaired enforcement. And the only reason I want to track impaired enforcement is I'm going down a few bodies just on a natural transfer cycle, it's kind of finally happened. So September, where I see a regular frontline contingent of seven general duty constables, I'll be down to five here. As of, I think, next Monday. So with that, a lot of our impaired work is self-generated, so when guys get the time, they're out doing check stops or they're, you know, they're doing some type of roadside demands and stuff like that. So if they get too overwhelmed with just the regular call volume, some of that self-generated work goes by the wayside. So that'll kind of be up to me and Dawn just to track and improve and find a better mousetrap, just so we can keep those numbers up. Especially coming, I hate to say, coming into the things like the holiday season and whatnot, where we typically see an increase from impaired drivers. Rural patrols, community engagement, you can see there's been a lot of community connections. Even more obviously now that we're back in school and whatnot, I think we've already visited. Every school within the community, the county so far. We'll spend this month kind of updating safe plans, lockdown procedures, kind of participating in that. Fall will also see us start to do a lot of desktop exercises for disasters. We'll do everything from our own desktop exercises. I think next week we're doing one of the pipeline companies here locally and whatnot, and it just kind of continues until the end of October. So you'll see us involved with that in the community as well, just don't see it on this specific report. With that, again, we are the priority right now in Southern Alberta. As far as kind of next in line for recruit or an experienced police officer or, you know, somebody coming out of a northern post kind of thing. So I'm hoping to hear back over the next thirty to sixty days, who's coming in and where they're coming in from. Obviously, sometimes people have houses to sell or they've got court commitments or whatnot, so the timeline's a little vague at this point. Best case scenario, it's somebody coming out of a northern post who has nothing to sell and it's just a quick jump on the bus and they're here in place, so. Administratively, we've still got the three front-end staff, which has been a great support to us as well, and we don't see any change in that going forward. Another thing I want to chat on as well is I'm aware one of the ministers from the province came down and talked to council or at least some of the community governments over the summer. And I just wanted to make it very clear, and this is right from the commissioner of the RCMP. The RCMP is not getting out of contract policing. We've never said that, we're not doing it, we don't know why this continues to be afforded, but we're not doing it. Our core commitments really are federal contract policing and specialized policing right across the country. I'm not saying at any point in time, maybe that's where we will go, but that's certainly not on the books right now. There's no talk of us getting out of contract policing in this province or anywhere else, so just so council is aware of that. Any questions, queries or comments, I guess, just with this brief report?
So help me understand, you have a contingent of nine right now?
That's correct.
So you're going to go down to seven?
Gonna go down to, so I've got a contingent of nine, we're gonna go down to seven and I've got one on light duties. So he still shows up, puts forty hours a weekend, I just can't put him in uniform and have him take the calls, so. And as I was telling Jeff there earlier, it doesn't hurt my feelings, I get to get out of the office more and do police work, which I'm happy about, so. But yeah, we hope to bump those numbers up quick and we'll get our one guy who's on light duties back in uniform, that's the goal anyway. And they get the other two bodies replaced just through, you know, natural transfer processes.
Thank you. Counselor.
Yeah, the premier came out this week about guns. They said that they would not be seizing anything and they wouldn't have the RCMP seeing, what's the thoughts on the RCMP with that?
Never, even since that bill came out and I think, what has it been now, at least two years now since it, was it just talk? I've never seen any communication anywhere with inside the organization that you're gonna go out, here's a list, start kicking doors, seizing guns, ever. Never, it's not even on the radar.
You're aware that she came out with those comments or?
I'm not aware that she came out with the comments, but I'm just saying within the organization, it's never even been brought up as a, like, this is the focus, right? This is where we're going with this, so. I think it's just so highly contentious that, you know, we've got bigger things going on, so, right, so.
Thank you very much, Sergeant Wright, one more question from councillor Burton?
So I just want to, on behalf of this council, being on the committee, everything you said about us, I would say about you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate your attitude, your willingness, your understanding of our community. Making your, our priorities, your priorities, I can't say enough good. I do have just some little quick questions on, if you go to the pages of the actual stats, just a couple jumped out at me. One was drug enforcement. So I assume that twenty-five is year-to-date.
Sir, are we looking at April to June twenty-one, twenty-five?
Yeah, that's right.
Two one, okay.
So it's under the category of drug enforcement?
Okay.
And so in twenty twenty-four, we've got ten, and if you look over here, you know, we've got anywhere between six to eighteen over those last four years. And then to date, we have none.
So I'll just show you yesterday. This is just for councils, whatever, feel free to pass it around. That's just from yesterday, Main Street, just out front of. The cooperators there, what you're looking at is, I guess, a large amount of cash bills, crack cocaine, prescription drugs, gabapentin. T-three, T-four, Xanax, I don't know, I can't. Learned how to spell a few of these yesterday. So sometimes with these stats. Because either charges haven't been approved or they haven't gone through all the way around, they're just not appearing on the sheets yet. I don't physically pull the stats myself, but just know, like, we are actively, like, taking it to some of these guys here in Carstens, so.
No change in our enforcement, just the way the numbers.
Yeah, I think it's just the way they're pulling the numbers, right? Like, we're regularly taking in drugs, like, all that cash was then seized as proceeds of crime. Guy was remanded, his next court date is tomorrow on Lefford, so.
The other one I would just ask about is just below it, roadside suspension for alcohol. That one just seems a little light as well. We go from, in the blue, or just below the blue, so it goes total MVC, it says roadside suspension alcohol. Last year we were at six, this year we're at one so far.
Right, yeah, again, that's not correct, so if you look at the priority issues, and maybe I didn't put the actual numbers in, let me check here. So under priority one, traffic safety impaired driving enforcement, the TSA. Okay, so we've already got over half of the year quarter, and I think we'd set the target at forty. IRS sanctions are impaired driving. I just, unfortunately, I just don't have the number on that, so I think we're just over twenty so far. Again, why those stats aren't necessarily being pulled, because they all look light, actually quite honestly, under twenty twenty-five, so. I don't know if it just had to do with the date that they pulled them, like, they're saying this is April to June on that one, right? So yeah, I know we're well above that, but.
As far, I guess the important part, as you're saying, there's been no change in your enforcement and things are right where we thought they were.
Yeah, we're right where we should be, like I said, with the exception of those two areas that we're tracking. Only because I know we're gonna be going down members, and so I just want to make sure that we find a mousetrap to keep those numbers up. What I'll do in the future, under the community priorities here, because what I get every morning is I get a watch report. What happened the night before, right? And I go through that watch report and I pull numbers for the annual performance plan, which I report back onto council. I don't necessarily see the stats that the, I think it's called the Strategic Research and Analysis Unit, something like that, that pulls these off the actual computer system. So what I'll do is I'll start putting the numbers in here, like, this is our target, this is where we're at this quarter. And this is, you know, kind of the projection of what we think one way or the other.
For the frontline perspective in the back stat.
Exactly, and the guys that are pulling stats up in Edmonton or wherever we pull these from, right? Because, and it could be, could be input errors on our part, maybe we're not, there's this thing called a UCR and I can't remember what it stands for now. Universal Crime Something, but there's a code for everything and you just, you fill out line upon line upon line, right? It was a mischief file, victim services was offered, there was a prisoner booked and, you know, you just get all these different lines of scoring. Somebody forgets a line of scoring and perhaps it's not being pulled, or they put a wrong line of scoring, right? So we'll have to go back to go down for sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much and please thank your detachment, you have one more question?
This curious offenses related to death, three, I mean, I don't know what that, there's none in twenty-one.
So. Defense, and again, like, I had to go back, look at some of the scoring, I know we've definitely have one that's under investigation right now, I think it's pretty well publicized. What's that?
Drugs?
Uh, well, one is drugs, the other one, we're investigating a suspicious death of Glenwood. So all those stats would be, would still be pulled into this area as well, right, so.
Okay.
Counselor Grant, you?
Yeah, just quickly, I've got an interesting vantage point on the RCMP, you might recall, my, my son was detachment commander in the RCMP in Armstrong, British Columbia.
Right.
Spent a lot of time talking to him about the RCMP and what he used, used to do in that job. He was recently promoted to an inspector's position in council.
Sorry about his luck.
Yeah. So he and I've lived RCMP and had, like I say, an interesting vantage point. I just want to say, I think you're one of the good ones. Again, like everybody else said here, thank you so much for all the work you do, because I know it's not an easy job. We're very appreciative of you and your, and your fellow officers in terms of protecting our community, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for that, I appreciate, I'll certainly take those comments back to the detachment.
Thank you, thanks your detachment on our behalf. Thank you so much, you served us well.
Hey.
We appreciate it.
Hey, thank you, Mayor and council, appreciate your time and again, thanks for, for your service to our community. Well, best of luck, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, councillors, we have minutes that need to be adopted. Councillor Burton?
I move to approve the minutes of August twelfth council meeting.
Thank you, all in favor? August the twelfth, yeah, you're right. That's a long time ago. All right, under five by law and policy, oh, would you love it?
I wondered when we were gonna get there.
Policy. D twenty-five-five, community donation policy. We need to put it to rest. Who wants to? Councillor Burton, appreciate you trying to put the motion forward, go for it.
So this is a policy, so I move that we adopt the policy.
D twenty-five-five.
Yeah, D twenty-five dash four.
Dash five, or dash four.
Dash four.
On the cover it says five-four. Then it says five-five, so it must, the new one must be five-five, the old one five-four. So D twenty-five-five, our community donations policy.
Thank you. Any other comment? I don't want to give you too much time, all in favor? Thank you, Joshua, thank you for your tremendous amount of patience and creativity in fixing that donation policy. I think it's not bad, it's a good, good job.
You're gonna miss us when we're gone, right?
Yeah.
We're not dying, guys.
Well, we, we're kind of slowing down, our fire is kind of not as bright.
I think she's still got a bonfire going on over there.
Who's this? All right, so next, under five B, the bylaw amendment sixteen forty-seven R, land use bylaw. I don't know if Jeff, you got any more information from OSC? If not, we need to consider first reading regardless.
Yeah, due to the short turnaround between CCW and this meeting, we only have a couple, three business days really in between, so I didn't. I actually got some informal stuff back from Ryan today, but it isn't in this draft. But because of the timing of the election, we need a month to book the public hearing on it. And so we'd like to get first reading, we can make amendments before the public hearing or after the public hearing in a month from now.
Okay, councillor Brand, your answer?
No, I was just ready to make, to do first hearing, councillor, did you have something?
No, I was gonna make the motion, but you, you beat me to it.
So sorry, I would like to make first reading of bylaw one-six-four-seven R, land use bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you very much, if you remember, councillor Burton had suggested two or three additions or revisions in the language or in the wording, so therefore that will be done in time. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so you can start to post your public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next one, the remuneration policy review, Jeff, we were looking at it and wondering what could be done in comparison of other municipalities?
So I bombarded you with three different documents just before the meeting, I've not had a chance to deep dive this, but I wanted to just give you some information. We still have a few meetings, we can talk about this, but there's three things on your desk. One is just a number of the, of the pages from the financial statements of you and other communities around you. Okay, so that's just for reference, I have, I have a summary table also on your desk, we'll talk about. But the bigger document that has a couple, the first couple pages, portrait and then landscape. AMSC does a compensation survey every year, which we participate in. And they break down the survey by different demographics, and one of the ways they do it is by towns under five thousand.
Oh, good.
And so this survey has a number of categories, but it also looks at average compensation for mayors and average compensation for councillors. But it gets into benefits and full-time, part-time and hours and daily meetings and we won't need to go through all that tonight, but it's good reference material for you to look at. So I put the first two pages because it shows the forty-six other towns it's comparing against. Whereas the financial statements I gave you are local, Pincher Creek, Fort MacLeod, Raymond McGrath, I think I have Colehurst and around us here. Fort MacLeod, thank you.
Clear.
So, and then this one sheet I gave you, the single page with a small table, that's just where I was pulling some of this data together. And please, this is not heavily analyzed, it's just quickly, I took the mayor's numbers and then I just averaged councillors. So I'd add up the total under councillors divided by six, and there's your number. What's interesting is, as you can see, you've got neighbors that are far ahead of you in compensation. You have neighbors that are behind you in compensation, but when you look at the forty-six communities of under five thousand, you are really, really close to the mean.
Mean.
You're actually not a major outlier, you would be within the standard deviation, you'd be within the bell curve and not within a standard deviation statistically. So I was, that was interesting to me, to see when we, we put a large sample in the mix where that landed. Regionally, you would be a little bit behind your peers. One of the also, I have Carstens County in there, but it's highlighted in green because remember, they don't have a mayor that they elected. They may shift around and there's compensation that goes with that, so the councillor average is pulled up. Because their councillors would have the reeve compensation for the times they're reeve. So that one was a little bit tricky to try and compare against, because I don't know how many years this person was reeve or this person was reeve or that, I don't know. So just something to consider. And really just looking for any feedback, how you might want to proceed, I can definitely dive a little deeper, we have a two-week break now. We can start to look at things, for example, like council compensation relative to total assessment. So the ability to pay councillors versus what they pay councillors. So maybe one community has a way bigger burden per capita than another community has a burden per capita based on their assessment or taxation. There's lots of things we can start to compare against, I just haven't gone down that road yet because of the short turnaround. So I welcome any direction, any feedback, what you'd like to see.
I think what you just suggested, to do a little bit more analysis would be helpful. And for us to kind of study those documents a little bit more, to be able in two weeks' time to have a little bit more to say about it all, yes.
The comment I would make structurally is, when I, if I understand it correctly, and I hope I do, because it's been four years, but we're not paid directly for attending council, or sorry, attending committee meetings.
We have one lump.
That's what I'm saying, we're not paid directly.
Correct.
No.
And when I talk to people from other councillors from other communities, that always surprises them. And on Thursday, you know, I traveled to my ORC meeting. The time I left till I got back was five minutes short of four hours.
Right.
So, yeah, so I mean, I thought, okay, so, you know, I get paid the same whether I went to that meeting or didn't go to that meeting. It just seemed a little odd. So if I were to say one thing to look at, because you asked this question last meeting, is there anything sort of structural that we would look at? I don't know, that seems a little bit odd to me, and I know there are paragraphs that say you should try to attend them all and everything, but still, you know, four hours later, it felt exactly the same because it was. Right, so anyway, that's my, my only input on it.
Yeah, councillor.
That's why I brought it last meeting, that I think anything outside of, say, McGrath is a happy day. You're traveling to Fort MacLeod or Pincher Creek, or I've been up to Nanton, I've been up to Staveley, I mean.
And you're right.
The north side of Lefford.
Yeah, so there you go. So I really think if you're traveling outside of, say, McGrath and outward, it's four hours, it's always right around there anyhow, so.
Okay, so Jeff, if you want to work a little bit more on it, I think you can do it without the direction of council?
Yeah, are there any specific comparisons, like, we know, when we look at the mean of the large sample in the MSC survey, you're pretty close to the mean, we know regionally you would be behind it. But is there any things like comparing against total tax dollars generated, population assessment per capita? Do you just want kind of a?
Yeah, a little bit of a broad mix of that sort would make sense. Because my difficulty is that when we compare ourselves, population-wise, we could be comparing apple to oranges because a town like Pincher Creek ourselves, they have a business tax base that we do not have. So their ability to pay is faster period to what we would ever be able to.
Mathematically, Mayor, just, and again, I don't say this is critical at all, but if you look at Carstens County pay versus yours, it's about double. But so is their assessment per capita. And so the impact per resident is almost exactly the same.
No, that's what I mean, that's why we have to look at it a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah.
Councillor Grant.
I mean, I get what you say about Pincher Creek, something on the railroad or the highway, Fort MacLeod. But I'd be interested to see the population numbers, just out of curiosity.
Yeah, but the tax base to me, the assessment, the religion.
Now, once you get all the data in the table, you can do almost anything with it, right?
I think then we'll have a better sense. Councillor Jensen?
So just a question, because people who are considering running for council, their biggest question is, is what is the pay? So what is the politically correct answer? Because we're not gonna have this settled between now and when they have to put their papers in, so is it four thousand per annum? Why do we tell them?
Well, you know what?
The average is fourteen thousand a councillor.
You can tell them exactly what the average is?
Yep, fourteen thousand. Four thousand. Fourteen thousand.
And like I said it last week, if you're doing this for the money, you're in the wrong spot, because if we looked at the number of hours that we spend in a year, divided into what we got paid, probably frighten us how low our hourly rate is.
Well.
We're not doing this for the money, and I think that you say that to them, you're doing this for the people of Carstens.
Correct.
There is, there is, there is still a fair remuneration for what the service is given, whichever it might be. It's not going to be equate, equating what you would get on a business world.
I get that, but.
No.
But it is a fair question, absolutely.
But many people are asking, what's the difference between running for school board and town council? I say, well, if you, if you want the school board, you're making more.
I just wanted to point.
And I bet you they work less hours too.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point out to, one of the things we haven't drilled down on, if you look, when you look at the sheet of the copies of financial statements, yours is the front one. If you look under the benefits and allowances piece, there's really nothing for you guys on a year-to-year basis, but if you just flip over to Pincher Creek or you flip over to Fort MacLeod or to the next two, it's a huge portion of total compensation. And so I can't, I don't have the data to say this is what that is, I will try and get that. Just, we just took, I just took total compensation and did the average.
And Jeff, the county the same way, so we see benefits.
So that's why you'll see, under some communities, you don't see that at all like yours, and under other communities, you see substantial amounts in that column.
Yeah. So it all depends how they're structured. All right, thank you very much for that, and councillors, you will have something before long. Under six, committee assignment, so we just need to approve the changes by way of motion.
I just have a quick question, I was going over it and I noticed, so under pow-wow, I'm not listed, you are. So do we need to?
Because it was the committee, yeah.
But I am and have been, or I just did a pile of work for nothing.
It was, yeah.
I'm just saying, we're making the changes, if we're gonna make it accurate, let's make it accurate.
Let's ask something on that, I kind of remember some. Let's ask something on that, I kinda remember some discussion about that, happy to be corrected here. Was the discussion, was it the the committee as you participated on was not our committee?
It was the Blood Tribe Committee.
Was that part of the discussion? Do you remember that at all?
I'd love to say yes, but I really don't, but under here it's got, so I'm. I mean, I'm in all the right places, but one of them is indigenous relations. But the powwow, that's a separate committee, which is completely separate people from. All the other Blood Tribe committees that I'm a part of. And so I'm just saying, if we're gonna make this accurate, let's make it accurate as.
Do we do we do that by striking that line altogether because it's not our committee?
It is not our committee.
That's, but it's a committee that.
That you're assigned to?
That we're assigned to.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So I think it should be on there.
Yeah.
For the next council.
No, but she's paid for it.
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, no problem for me.
So my question just is, is that. It is the town of Curdston along with. Uh Moses Lake and the Blood Tribe put the powwow on. So it is a committee that one of your counselors is on. Therefore, for the next council, I want them to know that this is a position that needs to be filled.
Okay, you know the way we should do it then Jeff, it's the same way as Souths go and the Souths was the are listed. Power regional, power. Power.
Sure.
Power some kinda something, but not local. Because power the way it's it's listed, sounds like we are generating the local uh thing, which is. Different, so we should give it a different, a different participation to power, maybe that's the way to call it.
I mean, you have an organizational meeting coming up in six weeks.
Yeah, anyway, I'm just saying, if we're gonna change things and make it.
Add that to it.
No, but I think I think you have a good point. It should be reflecting that it is not generated at this level, yeah. Counselor Granger.
So on the egg society, I thought uh with the new agreement, that they nixed.
Yeah.
Council member.
Shouldn't, shouldn't still be there.
You're right.
Counselor Burton.
I I go just of my own accord with the permission of the mayor just to be their policy guy.
But given that this is an official thing.
Should be deleted, yeah.
We should delete that, I mean, technically, you would you would be going to those meetings as a.
Regardless.
As an egg society member, not a council member.
Correct.
So that should be nixed.
Yeah, you're correct.
Right?
You're exactly correct, we need to kinda correct all that stuff, yeah, perfect. Well, I'm glad you found so much. Please go ahead with the.
So I guess my question is, in the motion, I am I just fixing it all under one motion? Or are we just gonna do one motion at a time? The lawyer says one motion.
Just with those corrections.
Perfect, so I make a motion. Um. Yeah, I got this, I make a motion to adopt, I'm just pulling this up, the. Um. Yeah, that's all, okay, so I make a motion to adopt the committee assignments. Um with. I will, with the corrections that have been set.
Yeah.
That's discussed, there you go.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Let's go to six B. Card home trees, now here Jeff indicated uh to me that. In order to move forward with this item, he needs a motion or to remove the trees. Or to top the trees, whatever we decide. But it appears that the shaffer are coming back and saying they want that we removed. Because they're putting a new roof and they are considering. As the negative effect of further tempest uh damages. And really don't want anymore to do with this item.
These are the trees on the north side of the property.
Yes.
Four of them, the big ones.
So they're saying, and Jeff was saying, we might start to to uh as. Suggested last time by you, Counselor Brown, to maybe trim them and I I was of that opinion that it could be a good thing. But on the long, long range, I don't see it satisfying their needs.
What do the guys next door think?
Well, I don't know that idea.
So it's kinda their.
Yeah, I. It's been discussed at. Occasionally discussed at meetings, but you might have to.
Trim them?
Well, no, we're talking about removing them now.
Oh boy.
If shafers won't be happy unless they're removed, right?
Well, it's it's a matter of putting a new roof and seeing the same issue uh perpetuating itself over time.
But the trimming, sorry, the the trimming might fix it. And if you continue to trim, it would continue to fix it.
I would appreciate if Jeff has more information on that.
I mean, to thin them and trim them up a little bit, those things are twenty more feet above that building. So the debris is gonna continue to fall and that is how it's been for sixty years. So that may be, if you want to, that might be how it continues to be. My my only concern here was I don't believe that trimming is gonna satisfy the complaint. And so if they're continuing to come back either to you or to the next council. What I don't wanna do is spend almost two thousand dollars trimming and then spend the money for removal. And it's not to say that removal is the right choice, I just, I'm not sure that satisfies the complaint and we did something that's good. And that's fine, but it didn't satisfy the original complaint.
Seems like when I was on that board for quite a few years, a big concern was the roots are under going in the cabin. Cause that's causing some structural problem, they're not, they were talking about removing those ten years ago, so it might be just. Better off just to get them out of here.
Counselor Jensen, Counselor Granger.
I don't know, I I kind of look at it, um I'm more in favor of trimming them. Because I think they have a responsibility to get up on their roof. You know, uh often and sweep off the debris. It's kind of like mowing your lawn, you have, you're responsible to keep your grass cut, you're responsible to keep your roof clean.
Yeah, except when the debris comes from uh the neighbor.
Neighbor, yeah.
It's a different story, Counselor Granger.
That's absolutely correct, the trees are on our property causing the problem. British common law says it's our, it's our responsibility.
Yeah.
The other thing that the the museum group uh talked about, and and you're absolutely right, and and this. The roots continuing to be a problem and that that only gets worse over time unless you get the tree out of there. The other concern that we did talk about in recent months, weeks even. Was what are the health of the trees? Because if one of those trees was in trouble. And a windstorm knocked it over, it would basically cut the card home in half. You know, if you had a north wind and the and the tree blew back on the building, there'd be nothing left of the card home. That was a concern to um those members of of um. Uh Historic Society.
All right, so here we need to make a decision. What is the feeling, uh Counselor um Brown?
I mean, I hate, hate to take down trees.
Me too.
I think there's no one at this table that wants to take those trees down. But what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing is, is that something of ours is destroying something of somebody else's. And that's not appropriate, unfortunately, it's not appropriate and. I never even thought of what it's doing to the museum, so I appreciate that side of it, counselor. I think with that said, we need to do, I mean, we ourselves need to be good neighbors, right? And so if we're gonna be a good neighbor, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our property that is destroying somebody else's. And if the fact that it helps to save the museum lasts a few more years and not having those roots underneath there, then. That's a plus as well, so.
Appreciate your comments.
Yeah, when I looked at those trees, so the ones in our last big windstorm were sixty year old trees, cause I talked to a bunch of people. Who remember when they were planted. These have to be ten feet taller than those sixty year old trees, they gotta be more. But Jeff, you had mentioned that one is leaning and when I went and looked at it, it's leaning away from the card home.
One in the front.
Front.
Yeah, I thought it was leaning towards a little bit.
Looked to me like it was leaning away, but anyway, it would be disastrous to have that building damaged. Yeah, it would be disastrous.
Who has a desire to put a motion forward?
Put a motion forward.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Removed the trees to the north side of the card home because of a safety hazard. I planted, I planted a lot of bushes in place, but that's another story.
To other.
Yeah.
Buildings.
In the background, there's a T L account with funding, if you could grab that, have that motion.
Counselor, do you want me to give it to you?
Uh I've got it. And that, as I said before, plus the deal will come from the account two dash seven two dash eight hundred town beautification.
Okay, any other comments?
The three or four trees on the north side.
The north by the side of the reef.
On the south side near the entrance, that'll stick.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
That's our Christmas tree. All in favor? Uh Counselor Kenley.
I'm not gonna vote on anyone.
You have to.
I wasn't here for that discussion.
We're taking the trees down by the Kenley, here by the Kenley.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. It's done, it's not our favorite, but.
Yeah.
Maybe it's the right thing to do. Under six C recommendation and item from CCW. I had asked that the letter be written to ERA for a. Uh a letter of thanks for the five million dollar for the sewer plant. And so we need uh, we need your approval, Counselor Brown.
Make a motion to uh uh send the letter um as written. To uh Mister Justin Reener um on behalf of council.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, all right, now, the good stuff. Sixty, follow up from previous delegation. Now, if you remember, we had Mister Curl who came and had. Issues with his utilities and Nmax bill. Uh the bill was about thirty four hundred dollar. And he was arguing that it should be reduced by about. Two or three hundred dollar because the dates were not appropriate or correct.
He he was seeing a reduction of about half.
Yeah. Half, okay, that's even worse, so Jeff, go ahead.
I just wanna fill in a couple of gaps, um. I I wanna be careful, I don't wanna get into point by point in his email, administration doesn't agree with some of the points in his email, but. It's not entirely what we're debating here tonight, so that's okay, we can just leave that. There's a couple of challenges and I wanted to just give you some context, um so. This is a, what what would be the right word, this is an uncommon and interesting thing. It happens on occasion, but it isn't, to go on this long is is uncommon. Um what we know is, is that in twenty twenty one, the water was turned on when the building was under construction and that was the first problem. That was unauthorized and inappropriate and the plumber at the time should have been fined. Because they did not have a meter in the house, we have no problem when water gets turned on during construction, but you put a meter in and then you turn the water on. It's perfectly fine and you couldn't get away with turning the water on yourself as the contractor in any other community. It's just not something, any plumber, every plumber should know that and no plumber should think they can get away with it. But again, that is kind of, well, four years ago in twenty twenty one. So the water is on and we're never notified because that's the mechanism when we go and. And turn the water on by which we start the billing. And because that had happened long before uh they moved in, um we just didn't catch it and it went on for a long time. So to the benefit of Mister Curl, they've had water, sewer, garbage and recycling at no charge since they moved in by his date. January seventeenth, twenty twenty two, and for the whole construction period too, by the way. So, okay, fair enough, um. It it didn't start. But I wanna point out where we're struggling with this and where where I would, we need to make some decisions and there's room for some policy improvement here. Is we have a utility customer relations policy and in the, in the policy it says. If there's an investigation and there's some incorrect billing, we can correct those, we can make adjustments up to a maximum of twelve months, so.
Yeah.
What happened back at the beginning of twenty twenty five, and I was able to pull Tara's emails with Nmax because we still have all those and. She had emailed them and basically said, look, we've told this person to put a meter in, we're not getting a response back, this was at the beginning of twenty twenty five. Just um bill them for an unmetered rate for the last year. And let's, let's, that's what we're gonna have to bill them, we're just gonna bill them the unmetered water rate now and definitely until they get the meter in. So that's where that original number came from. So Nmax went back and said, okay, we're gonna bill them the unmetered water sewer rate. Um for all of twenty twenty five, essentially, twenty twenty four, sorry, essentially. And then um, and then they finally got their meter in. So we had, we had gone to their house and told them they needed a meter and. I agree with Mister Curl, it appears he was making best efforts to get a hold of his builder and to get that all done, but it took. Um from June seventeenth, twenty twenty four to April sixth, twenty twenty five to get the meter in. So almost ten months to get the meter in. And so. In that time, he is being billed for the unmetered water rate because he doesn't have a meter, that's the right rate to be billed. So your sewer is higher and your water is higher and there's a second unit in there which compounds the charges further. Okay? So he's got this huge amount, no argument there, no argument, where we're struggling a little bit is. And where the policy needs to be improved is, what's the date that we go back the twelve months? Right, so we went to their house on June seventeenth and informed them, should it have been? June seventeenth now, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four and then normal billing going forward. Should it have been in April sixth when they finally installed the meter, then we go back twelve months from that, I don't think that's the right answer, by the way. But we've been kicking around like it says we can go back twelve months, but from when? Because we've realized that there was a whole lot of correspondence, it took a whole lot of time. For this to come to a resolution and it isn't totally obvious when the retroactive charges should be. What date the retroactive charges should have been put in. From administration's point of view, from the date we went to their house to inform them there wasn't a meter and they need to do it, that's. At least a reasonable time. By Tara's email, she had emailed and just said, we've notified the homeowner, they've picked up their water meter. Upon inspection, it has not been installed, we've sent a letter to them regarding this, there's been no contact. We're going to initiate the billing of flat water and sewer garbage for all of twenty twenty four. Um because again, they were, they were notified back in June of twenty twenty four. So that's the challenge in the policy. And we need to decide maybe where we're most comfortable. Um and again, this is a two unit facility, so that presents some complexities with the two and the rate they were charged and. That Mister Curl talked about the higher sewer rate, um that's because it's a multi-unit unmetered sewer rate. And um he mentioned the blood reserve rate, but the town, the blood reserve rates on all utilities are exactly the same.
Yeah.
Um so that's fine, so that's just a little more context.
Okay, uh Counselor Burton, Counselor Granger, and I have a question for you. Uh Counselor Kenley, uh Counselor Burton?
So Jeff, I I think the only relevant date is the date that somebody turned it on. The bylaws deem notice, if you have a bylaw in town, it says two things, one. The owner is responsible to notify the town and two, nobody's entitled to turn the water on. Those are both in our bylaws and they're deemed to be public knowledge. So I I think it's irrelevant what happened after that as far as conversations back and forth go. And to me, it's just, well, what's the fair rate from that point? Oh, no, another issue, you say, well, we, the policy says we can only correct it back twelve months. Well, we're we're not correcting a bill, we're issuing one.
Yeah, that's the challenge too, there was a lack of a bill.
Yeah, so I I think that's talking about something different, that's where. You know, not that there's no bills, but there's a typo, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff you can correct. The wrong rate was applied.
Yeah, we see that, that's fairly common.
So that's, that's what correcting is talking about, it's not talking about whether we issue a bill or not, in my opinion. So if it were me, I would say, well, your start date is whatever date your plumber turned on the water. And we're, because the whole, the whole situation arose because.
That wasn't.
They didn't follow the bylaw, I don't know how we get past that point, I think it stops there. So if they didn't follow the bylaw and all of the rest of this was the trail that they left behind, I think all, who pays for what, that's between him and his plumber, not. Nothing to do with the town, I don't think we're correcting, I think that's the date we started from and. He made the point, well, I'm not on the blood reserve and they're the ones that are charged the. Flat rate or whatever it is. I mean, that's our flat rate for anybody who doesn't have a meter. And you didn't have a meter, so there's the rate, I I don't, I'm not seeing what the confusion and discussion is.
Okay, thank you, Counselor uh Kenley?
I was gonna ask, how much communication was between Tara and him?
All times.
Prior, like, was it just one email or was it multiples that he wasn't responding? Prior, like, was it just one email or was it multiples that he wasn't responding?
So I would have to do a little further digging on that, um, aside from
And this was before our town worker went, correct?
Yes, this was quite a bit before that. I just have, this is an email to N Max, by the way, where she just said, um, we've notified the homeowner of this. They've picked up the water meter. I sent a letter back in March. We have been no contact, like, so that, that indicates three points of contact. There, we informed you, you came and picked up the meter, we sent you a letter. So there was now, do I agree that Mr. Curl probably maybe did or didn't know that the plumber was turning on the water for construction purposes? I don't know. But to Counselor Burton's point, and I'll just read, the bylaw says the owner of a property shall be responsible for making application to the appropriate authority for utility service as soon as the building on the owner's property is occupied or otherwise in use. So that's what the bylaw currently reads.
I just wanna finish my comment then. I think this is between him and his plumber. I think that the money for him recouping money, that's why I think this is between.
Counselor Cole?
I forgot.
Yeah.
So Counselor Grantur, and, uh, can, can you give me a chance as to? So when, when did he pick up the meter?
Uh, hold on, I have that timeline.
Eighteen, two thousand and twenty four. Picked up water meter from the town utilities office from Monarch Deuce and inform our builder, the water meter is here and ready to install. So June eighteenth of twenty twenty four.
So
So he had the meter from the year.
From twenty twenty four. So there is that date. To me, it's an important date that he got it fixed six months later. It's not our fault. But and the, and the stand Counselor Burton point, the bylaw definitely says use water, you're responsible for it. But on the other side, I don't know how much he really understood that there was a bylaws and comments and all that. That's ignorance. I don't know. But I'm wondering then what happens when somebody picked up, picks up a meter? What is a time period that it should be normal to install such a thing? Because we don't have nothing in our policy that speaks about that.
But normally, Mayor, we don't care because the water's not on. So they can pick it up and they can take six months to install it. If we haven't turned the water on, we don't care. But in this case, they turned the water on years before getting the meter.
Contrary to the bylaw.
Contrary to the bylaw and I would say probably you need community practice.
That's the issue. Was he aware of it? That's
Yeah. My question, I remember now. Is it logical to see that somebody in the town should just turn it on? Go ahead and turn it on. We don't have enough workers. Does that make any sense?
No, because again, that's the mechanism to commence billing. Right? So we'll always go and turn that on. I can envision a scenario where someone phoned the office and said, hey, I need water here right now. Can somebody up here and turn this on? And it's like, no, it's four o'clock on a Thursday. We can't. We can probably come tomorrow. And they just went and turned it on. Like, I, I'm not saying that's what happened. But I can see you could interpret from that scenario where they, they phoned on a Friday at five and said, oh, by the way, we need water immediately. Yes, sorry, we, we can do it on Monday.
Not likely if town workers said, just go turn on yourself, though.
No, no, I would say highly unlikely.
Counselor Grantur?
I agree a hundred percent with Counsel Burton. Um, and ignorance of the law is no excuse.
Yeah.
Um, but he's, he's grumbling about the calculation of the water bill, the thirty four hundred dollars, um, from this, from twenty four onwards.
Yeah.
What Counselor Burton and I are talking about is that he should be charged even more going back to, to when the plumber connected the water. And we know, we know when that ru- roughly is. He, he told us.
Yeah.
So if we apply the bylaw, which I think we are duty bound to do, it's gonna be even higher.
About ten thousand dollars?
Yeah. And you know what? I have no sympathy for this guy. None. He shouldn't get free water.
Okay.
And sewer and garbage and recycling.
Yeah. Counselor Grant?
So I, just a question in regards to, I think I'm not disagreeing with what's being said, but I also feel like obviously from what I'm hearing is this is a plumber issue that we're having. That, that whether we send, uh, email out to our plumbers within our community that this isn't a thing we do and if we are turning it on without having the proper notification by the town and the town having the water meter in place, you will be fined.
Counsel, Counselor Brown, it was from Lesbridge, if you remember him saying.
I don't care. It's still the, no, but it's the town of Cardston I'm saying. I don't care where the
It come from.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, the plumber was, but I'm just saying our guys, let's make sure they know. So that, because this isn't the first time it's happened. And so obviously it's happening. We need to make sure that we don't have to talk about this again. So let's make sure that our plumbers know that if in fact they turn it on, they will get fined.
I, I just wanna say that and I appreciate Counsel Brown. We have identified that this is an opportunity for strengthening the policy and the clarity around the policy.
Yes.
And, and that, that's something we'll take from this for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Grantur, Counselor Jensen?
Just a question I had in the back of my mind throughout this whole discussion. Do we not have a process in place that a new home being built like this, an occupancy permit is issued?
Uh, so yeah, Park Enterprises would, would issue that.
Okay, so, um, how did this get by? How did he get an occupancy permit without a water meter?
I'd have to do some homework into that, 'cause I, again, we don't do the inspections internally, so I'd have to do some, a- ask some questions about that file, Counsel.
I mean, uh, I'm not trying to give the guy an out here, but he keeps pointing the finger back at the town of Cardston. I don't think that's, at least in the initial instance, it's, it's a problem with his, with his plumber. We all agree with that. And then whether he likes it or not, he is tied through adhering to the bylaw to his plumber. They're the same, right? And he, as a homeowner, has a responsibility. And I find it difficult to believe, sorry, his story that he just didn't know. I, I, you, you know, I, I just can't fathom that.
The plumber didn't know?
The plumber didn't know, the builder didn't know, the homeowner didn't know. There's three people that should have known how this works. And then, you know, when he, when he said, oh, I never checked my meter, well, I didn't know I had, well, didn't have one. I check my meter probably three times, four times a year.
That's great.
You know? So I, I just
Okay.
find it difficult to believe this.
Counselors, what we have here, let's go back to the original letter and why he made, uh, why he made his, uh, his appearance here at council. He came to council with a bill of three thousand four hundred and some odd dollars.
Thirty seven hundred.
Thirty seven. Why don't we stick with that right now and, and, uh, although all the rest is correct, but N Max did not bill him. And Max billed the town, obviously somewhere for those services.
Uh, no.
So water used must have been meters somewhere.
So N Max is simply billing end users. We don't report to them wholesale water treated or distributed.
So in other words, it's l- loss of revenue.
Loss of generating and treating and providing that service is eaten by the town, certainly. But we did not get a bill from N Max for this or this.
All right. So we should really stick to the idea of that bill, three thousand seven hundred. Is there modification that should be made to that bill or we agree he has to pay it solely and that's about it?
So there, with respect, I disagree with that. I think the only relevant date is the date it was turned on.
No, I agree with you.
I would be prepared. He, he made in his presentation a suggestion, if I understood him correctly, that the he contemplated looking at his current usage and using that as the factor for whatever date he is relevant. So he thinks shorter date, I think longer date, but if that, if that sum were less than the flat rate, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
In other words, I don't the, the morality in me says I don't want to charge him a penny more than we should is the same morality that says he shouldn't get a windfall at the expense of his neighbors. Because if you look at it, if, why should someone get a windfall by avoiding their obligation under our town bylaws? That's a bizarre result. So I would use that start date, but if the other date is a reasonable, or if the other calculation is reasonable and less.
You said calculation?
I, I'm okay with using that calculation. I'm also very fine with giving him time to pay. I mean, that'd be a shock to anybody.
Okay, so Counselor Burton, help me understand. The water was turned on in two thousand twenty one by the plumber. In other words, you're saying from twenty twenty one to the time he got a meter, it should have a cost of usage?
Yeah, because if he hadn't followed our bylaw, it would have been. And any, any, any variance in that is, is because of his actions, not because of our towns. And I'm including his plumber in my saying his. And his builder, whoever the general contractor was, it sure isn't the town.
But then what you're saying, you're saying, let's review the billing
Yeah, he, so we had, for whatever it was.
If he had the meter.
Right, so until we had the meter, we applied our flat rate. It was a reasonable thing to do, but he made the argument, if I heard him correctly, saying that, well, if you take what I'm actually using, the rate would be lower than your flat rate. And I'm okay with that. If, I don't know, I, I don't even care. But if it's less, I'm willing to say, okay, fair enough. If that's a reasonable way to calculate it and it's better for you, let's do that.
All right. So would it be possible to maybe mitigate a little bit and try to find a compromise where we review his bill since he has a meter? We, we know that the meter represents so many cubic.
We, we know his actual use from April sixth of this year.
Okay.
We know that precisely because the meter's been in.
So how much percentage?
We can do a, an average monthly consumption from August sixth to, to today.
So, but he had his meter for since June eighteen, twenty twenty four, so let's say.
Didn't get installed until April of twenty twenty five.
April twenty twenty five, which is not that many months.
Well, from between, no, we don't have a huge sample size, but we do have we got four months.
And he made the point that those will be high months because he's watering the grass and everything. But again,
All right, so
I don't know. What else do we do?
So since twenty twenty four, but what, what you suggest that he should pay from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four?
And I agree, by the way.
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
But that seems to me, uh,
I would, I would move from January seventeenth when they actually moved into the house. They could have used a ton of water before that in, in construction, so if we're gonna go numbers, I would go
I'd even go with that date, sure.
The date that they moved in.
Sure.
So they moved, they moved in?
January seventeen, twenty twenty two.
Three years, three and a half years. I might even be able to go with that, get a resolution, but I don't wanna see this guy get away with free water.
All right, can, can administration maybe kinda try to prove it what the bill on water and sewer might look like if we use?
You wanna see what those numbers are first before you make a resolution?
Just to direct administration to do that, because then like, there's no use in talking about it. Everyone's agreed. We've got the date in which we want it to start. We now know that we're gonna go back and look at their so many months worth of water sewer usage and we're gonna charge them on that accordingly.
And if, if
But if, huh, if he's grumbling about the thirty four hundred, I'm gonna add to it. It's gonna be like
Eight thousand dollars.
It's gonna be more than that.
Adding two more years to the salary.
Because he's bought all this water for free.
And all his garbage for free and everything for free.
No, we can't, we can't agree with that.
No?
Oh.
That's the whole point.
That's, that's what I'm saying, like, you should realize.
This is water, sewer, garbage, recycling.
This is why I told him that the neighbors kinda contribute just to paying his bill.
If you'd like to see some numbers, I can bring those back for you before you
I don't want him to have to pay more.
I'll make a motion if you entertain it.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So my motion is that with respect to, uh, Mr. Curl's account, utility account, that his bill billing period commence with the occupation date up to the date that the meter was working. And that it, the rate applied to that be the lesser of the flat rate that we would normally charge or his post-meter numbers applied backwards to that date, whichever is less. And then lastly, that we give him two years interest-free equal payments to pay it to the town. Or three, if that sounds better.
Or he might need more time.
Three years.
What we normally do is three years on these.
Question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just so in this letter, he is asking for the three thousand seven hundred ninety seven dollars to be waived or to work with us, whatever. That's the ask, correct? Okay, so now we're talking about back billing him. So it's going to be more than the four thousand dollars.
We're saying no to his request and we're gonna backcharge him for the water that he got for free.
What's happening, Counselor Brown? There is, there is a feeling around the table that this, uh, resident had a plumber that was obviously very little savvy. But that he benefited from years of not being paid utilities that should have known needed to be paid. When you own a house, you have utilities.
I understand.
But for two years or so, it didn't bother him not to have utilities to be paid. And so that is what the conversation is and that seems to be a feeling that we should at least know what those charges are. So there is a motion around the table. It's not a ple- pleasant thing to do, but the truth of the matter is we are responsible for equally and fairly share the burdens.
It's not playing very well.
No, but it's the way it is. It's not who you know, it's what's fair and right for the community.
And I feel, don't get me wrong, I feel bad all the way around that that happened. I just say, who's, who's the right person to pay for utilities used? As the mayor pointed out, even to charge your ten, your, uh, tenant for the services that you're not paying for, I just, I don't know how else you, you do it.
But that's what I had said, I said, you collected money from your tenant all those years. He said, yes. I say, how come you didn't feel that you had to pay yourself?
I guess the part that I'm struggling with the most is, and I don't have any connection to him or anything, it's just is that he's ca- he came to us to say this is what's going on and being upfront. Yes, it's taken me this long for sure. Um, three thousand seven hundred ninety seven dollars I'm owing and then now we're gonna go back to him and say jokes, you actually owe so much more. I just, I, I, I can't, yeah.
Well, you can vote against it.
Oh, I will, yeah.
There is a, a motion there, so if, is Counselor Kenley coming back or what's happening?
He's on call, so he got called to the hospital.
I really would want his vote.
Let's wait, though.
I'm, I'm going to wait, yeah. Table it.
Let's do that.
Till he gets back.
Till he gets back.
Yep.
Okay. All right, yeah, I really don't want to vote on that without him. Now, under six D, uh, two, Laurie, that one is regarding the mowing of the lawn that we had to send a contractor to do the job. It's, uh, apparently from what I gathered from administration, uh, a recurrent issue. And therefore, uh, I really feel the fees are correct and should be applied. Are you in agreement?
Yep.
So
Yep.
Okay, thank you. On the six D, on the, uh, Sam Hudson is a very, um, electric young man that really has grand ideas. Except that I think there is a few things that need to be, uh, worked in the sense that we really need to understand what the true us from the town really is because it can amount extremely rapidly to a lot. to a lot of money, and we might not have the capacity even to offer all the services that he is requiring. So that, a young man with grand ideas, love grand ideas, but we've got to be realistic here. And councillor Brown?
I just feel like we dealt with it. We gave him the direction when he was here. Councillor Jensen had suggested FCS that, so I feel like we sent him on the right direction. I don't feel like we need a motion for this.
I agree.
Do you want to say anything else, Jeff, regarding that?
If, if there's no motion, then I'll just tell him we're not, we won't be participating. I, I guess I just want to say, my caution with these type of events is there's a, we end up getting really, really involved. So, so the ask is for power on Main Street, which is fine if it's just power on Main Street, but then if it's, we're decorating every pole that takes my guys a whole work week to do. And by the way, we already do that once a year and then decorate them, which is fine. It just gets really big really fast for the town. And I want to be really, really cautious about, I think that we could probably find a place for this in Lyons Park and, and make it successful, um, and keep it third arms-length, third-party type of a thing. I think he's welcome to apply for Opportunities Initiative funding if he goes through that work for the next budget year, but um, I just wanted to say, administratively, there isn't a lot of capacity to take on a huge event. Um, if we're pulling permits from transportation, are we supplying flag people and detours and, for a whole day? And closing the street, we're not sure the vendors want closed for a whole day. There's a lot of moving parts here. So I just, I was just gonna ask that it's approached with a real caution for, for our sake.
Councillor Burton, do you mind me? Jeff, I was talking with you regarding, uh, the following idea. We have a capital project proposal policy. And I was thinking, why couldn't we start to draft a new project proposal similar to that, kind of mimicking the idea? So that we could have all the parameters in place regarding anybody coming with a grand idea for a festival or whatever that might be, and be able to say, those are the requirements. And so we don't have to have it at council and debate because we don't know where we're going with it. So would you feel comfortable doing something like that, having administration draft a, a policy regarding new project proposal? Yeah?
Like event proposals, yes.
Event proposal, yes.
He just finished that.
You're gonna go again.
Telling the mayor, we should actually make this an amendment to the donation policy, is really what we should do.
Just to keep it going.
And we can keep it rolling. We can bring it back. We can keep bringing it back.
My, my comment was, as, as I listened to his presentation, I thought, you know, some very good ideas and abundant enthusiasm, but we already have something that we do, our Festival of Lights. And I wonder if anytime, like that enthusiasm and everything, if it could be joined with that. I know we talked about something that FCS does, but I thought, you know, that's kind of a unique thing. So MacLeod has the Santa Claus parade. But if we had that and we really said, you know what, that's what Cardston's going to do. We're already doing it, it's growing every year, it's beautiful, it's successful. The year we had fireworks was a real hit. You know, like, what if we said, let's have our apple cider event, and let's, let's have our street things then, and let's, like, make it even bigger, you know, like, we're already halfway there, let's finish that one and make it something that all the communities come to Cardston in the winter and you know, by the time we have a fall one and then we have a winter one, and I sort of feel like Jeff does, like, there's lots of stuff.
Just a question. So, um, respectfully, I disagree. I feel like our, um, businesses on Main Street need all the foot traffic that we can get. And I, I agree that I do not think this is something that we, the town doesn't need one more dang thing to do, I hundred percent agree. But I am all for supporting champions within our community in the county that want to run with it. And, and I just think as long as council's firm on, we're not going to be taking this over, we're not, like, I, I just think something in the fall is a great idea because our businesses on Main Street, they need that foot traffic. And if it's another, um, you know, market or whatever that looks like, I, I, I'm for it.
Yeah, and I'm not in any way against it at all, just.
I just think you're wanting to sandwich it, and I don't want it sandwiched. I, I mean, not that I don't think the Christmas festival can grow, I'd love it, I think it's fantastic, or Festival of Lights, but I think something in the fall would be, you know, we've got our big football games and like, like.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Like Midnight Madness, like they used to do, you know, ten years ago, the Midnight Madnesses, they were fantastic, and it was during the football games, and if we could wrap that around, and again, it had nothing to do with the town, it was the chamber.
All right, um.
Well, again, um, and I said this last time, community awareness through FCS is always looking for something to do with the children so that they're not terrorizing in the gym. And I think it would be a great idea for them to, um, join with them, and, and it would cut his costs down a lot.
All right, so, thank you so much for all your comments. Are we, uh, okay with with asking administration to draft an, a, a new event project proposal policy similar to the capital project policy?
Sure. Mayor, I'm aware of another policy that they're working on. And it, it may be appropriate to be done in conjunction with that policy.
Not donation, eh?
No, not donations. Could we at least wait to the end of the meeting for you to make that motion?
Sure.
America, I just mentioned something, this is just for interest. I, uh, coincidental to the, the delegation from Mr. Hudson, I had a meeting with the South Zone rep from Travel Alberta. We just hadn't connected in years, and it was time for us to touch base. And we were also talking about potential funding on the golf course clubhouse and a few things. But she mentioned they have a tool at Travel Alberta where, if you're proposing an event, they, they take all the data from the event and they punch out the economic impact of the event. And if it meets a certain threshold, they'll look at getting involved. If it doesn't meet a certain threshold, they don't get involved. And I'm not suggesting we try and necessarily duplicate that locally, but it was a fascinating idea. It got me thinking about Mr. Hudson's proposal saying, and we've seen those a lot before with concerts and Midnight Madnesses and all kinds of things the towns ask to participate in, and so my mind got going around simple metrics to kind of determine what, what would be the economic benefit. You know, it's one thing to say that you might get more foot traffic, you might just get the same foot traffic just later in the day. It might be the exact same amount of people just spread out over a couple more hours. I don't know that for sure, but anyway, they had this fascinating tool that as we get approached about big events, we may be able to even send them there and say, look, we want you to work with Travel Alberta, do the assessment, bring that back as part of the application. So that was just very interesting when we were talking that that tool, uh, exists.
Okay, all right, so councillor, uh, councillor Kenley, we need to, uh, have the motion regarding the curl issue read to you because you were not there and we didn't want to vote. No? It's okay? Work is work.
I was likely leaving again soon, but, sorry.
Okay, could you reread that motion for us, um, uh, Shem? Okay, guys, we have that motion. Well. Okay, so in other word, the, the, um, motion was made by councillor Burton, and councillor Burton said that we need to go back to January seventeen, twenty twenty two, when the, uh, occupant, is that what you said?
When they moved in.
Yes.
January seventeen, did they move in January or in April?
January seventeen, two thousand twenty two.
All right, so that from that day on, the billing has to be, uh, figured out at the lesser of the rates using an average usage according to the metering that is now done, remembering that there is a suite where he collected utilities for that suite but did not pay himself. So that is the motion, is to go back and the thirty seven hundred dollar is what it is, correct?
No, it's going to be more than that.
Wow, no.
No, but.
I don't know what it's going to be, I'm just proposing the method of calculation and the time period over which we calculate it.
That is all the period retroactive to no metering. And from the metering on, that's what NMAX has done.
Is both, the backcharge and.
Yeah.
So does that cover the whole period up to today? Where we.
Just till, I said till the meter starts working. Whatever day it started to work, that's the end of the period.
That's what I said. So I was correct.
Sorry.
Okay, so how comfortable are you with that?
Kinda not-ish.
Why? I thought you, I thought you said you were in agreement with councillor Burton.
I was.
Okay.
I mean, that's, yeah, okay, yeah. I still think, I don't know, uh, this is hard for me. Shouldn't get free water, however, there's no however, I guess. I mean, the town knocked on the door and I just think there was, he was being contacted and it was so long. I would like to know more, like, what the emails were like from Tara to him prior to.
We have him that said.
He might, he probably missed that, though.
He asked, he is the one who asked.
You know, the more I look at it, like, I don't think he should get free water, but I also believe almost that it should go back just to when the town worker was at his door.
We don't know that that's even true.
Well, we don't know that he didn't look at the bill, right?
Well, we know that there is a town worker that came because it's in the, one of the, the memos. We know that the town worker came, it's reg.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, so are, are you being retro to when the town worker came? Is that what we're talking about here?
No.
Well, I'm more comfortable going back to the June seventeenth date, personally. So I would probably vote against that.
There's a motion on the table.
Personally.
And in fairness, councillor Brown had pointed out while you were out that it could result, I don't know, but it could result in his bill actually going up, not down.
It's going to.
Which is what I'm uncomfortable with. He's coming to, sorry, I can't. Yeah, so.
Sorry, I missed off it, I apologize.
You did, you, no, there's no apology. It's, it's, but it's just, we wanted to table this until all of us could be here, so. Um, I had brought up the fact. No, we haven't voted. We're waiting for you. So that's why it's important that you understand all the sides. So I had just brought up the fact. I don't disagree about him having to pay his bill. I think he should. I just, I am comfortable with him paying the three thousand seven hundred ninety seven seventy one, that's what I'm comfortable with. Well, no one's comfortable with that, but I'm just not comfortable with then going after him for, like, one of the councillors said, I mean, who knows, it could be up to six grand that he could owe. Because if we go all the way back to occupancy or however far that is, it could be way more, and that I'm not comfortable with, so I will be voting against.
That what you're proposing? Yeah.
Councillor Grant, yeah?
Counterargument is that, um, the fly in the ointment is the plumber, but it's his plumber, his builder, and he, and all three of them have a responsibility, and particularly the homeowner has a responsibility under the bylaw to do things properly, and it didn't happen. And he got free water from the time the plumber turned on the water until basically the meter got red, which was in twenty twenty five. And he's grumbling about thirty four hundred dollars, but he's, he's, he's getting probably close to thirty five hundred dollars worth of free water if we don't retroactively backcharge him, because if he had have done it properly, he would have paid that. What makes it worse, ignorance of the law is no excuse, but what makes it worse is you've got a tenant who he's collecting rent and, and, and part of that is utilities, and yet he's not paying the town for the utilities. And on a point of principle, that, at least councillor Burton and I agree, that that is just wrong and needs to be corrected, and we, I say, we are duty-bound to follow our bylaws as councillors, and we have a, a fiduciary responsibility to protect our taxpayers. This guy shouldn't get a free ride.
Councillor Burton?
Mayor, one quick comment. I just want, for the record, I believe everything he told me, like, I'm not imputing any, you know, that he, he's twisting things, or I don't believe any of that, I believe he doesn't check his meter, uh, I'm good with all of that, like, I, I think he's a good member of our community, and I believe everything he told us, and I bet his notes are right. Given all of that, I still would, I've made my motion. I'm still where I'd end up, regrettably, but I, this is where I'd end up.
All right, there is a motion on the table, then to go retroactive to January seventeen, twenty twenty two, but to apply the average consumption rate as metered.
Whatever works in his favor.
Right.
And paid out over a period of time, of three years.
And to, yeah, I mean, the payment might have to be, uh, even on a longer, longer period if it needs to. That's maybe needs to be looked up with the, with council. What I find, one of my comment would be, he came with a bill to discuss a bill, but through the investigation of looking at that bill, we discovered that he had not paid his utilities. Had he not disclosed that he had not paid, we would not have known, correct? But you're right, he's still, he is still obligated to a bill.
So because he's honest and trying to do the right thing and came to council to talk us through this, we're going to whap him on the hands with a bigger bill? Like, that just is just.
I don't know that those are the facts, Jeff. Could you clarify that?
Because right here, it says.
Is the only reason we know he didn't pay his water bill because he showed up? Like, how do we know, like? We, we know when the occupant.
We've known over years, we were trying to get him to install a meter.
Okay.
Like, we had that record, so likely what.
Not being punished for his coming forward, we already knew.
Likely what happened is that we get a list of, so Tara will reconcile like a list of properties versus who's getting billed, and it would have showed up as a property that existed in the system and was not getting billed. It would have been, we get a report of any unbilled in. And so that's where this would have first flagged. She would have got a report that said, hey, what's going on with this address? It hasn't been billed for anything for a while, and then reached out and this whole process would have started.
Be initiated.
We would have likely had to initiate it, yes.
Mayor, I just want to add, after our vote, I would like to make a motion to recommend, oh, I can talk whatever, I would like administration to look at enforce, like, that bylaw with turning on the water and, like, we should start enforcing. Okay, this is why I shouldn't have, I'm sorry.
No, but that's exactly what I said.
Okay, so there is a, there is a motion there, all in favor? Against? It passes.
That hurt, that hurt bad.
All right. Uh, it's very unfortunate, and Mr. Curl can always come and petition. The committee and other reports budget to actual is there for your information we might need.
Just really quick, I wanted to mention, you pointed two GLs last time that were over budget. Uh, Storm, and I'm sorry, I forget the other one. Uh, it was lab work, the water.
Right.
The storm is over budget, and actually, the other ones aren't yet, but they're gonna push a little over because we purchased all the materials for the Franco-Sud site when we were doing our, our bids.
Right.
If we don't end up doing that, this, we'll have to move those into inventory, so they're gonna go into inventory at the end of the year, and we'll work through that. You might recall when we did the mill rate, we. You might recall when we did the mill rate, we pulled the revenue and expenses out until we got. But Brandon was purchasing all of our materials, so he purchased it, we assigned it to those accounts, we still have some fixing to do on that depending. And we'll talk about that in closed session.
Thank you, so quickly, do you have any questions?
Not really a question, but just, uh, more on FYI. So, um, South Grove is having their meeting on September twenty fifth, it's a Thursday, it's in McGrath. And they have invited, um, I assume Jeff. To, uh, come and talk about our new, uh, wastewater.
Oh, nice.
And, uh, the environment of, uh, money that we got for it. So I would think that if anyone wanted to attend that, let me know. Or let Jeff know really quick so we can let Peter know so that they can plan for the meal, it's from six to eight. Twenty fifth in McGrath, I don't know where in McGrath yet.
What do you call, of course? Counselor Burton?
Are we on number seven?
Uh, it's, it's just under.
Questions, yes, we're on.
So committee and other reports are questions that can fit under wherever you want at seven or eight. When I went to ORSC. Um, they put forward their new budget for the next three years. And, yeah, but listen to how much, so.
It's, it's scary.
So the next, if you use twenty twenty four as our baseline. The year we're in now, they increased our membership fee thirty five percent in this year one. And they're proposing to raise it fourteen percent on the hundred and thirty five percent. In next year, and seven percent the next year on all of that, if you add all that up compounded, and I asked them, are you compounding this? And the answer was yes, I mean, it wasn't a straight yes, but the answer was yes, that's sixty eight percent in three years. In addition to that. They're raising our user fees and it varies, you know, between, I'll say twenty percent and a hundred percent. There, then we also have a fee called our. Equalized assessment, I don't even know what that is, but I know the other equalized assessment I don't like, but I do know what it is, so. It's, you know, I, I don't know, and I don't know how big those numbers are, did you get a chance to look at that? You know, maybe if they have small numbers, we don't care, but it just seems like a dramatic, what is a dramatic jump percentage, what is sixty eight percent?
I know.
Plus user fees going up.
So, uh, Jeff. Could we maybe have Ryan come and explain to us?
I can give you their explanation. I raised it at the meeting, as did a whole bunch of other people. Community, so each community has one rep there. It was kind of coming out of COVID, they had. A bad year where they had a big deficit and used up their reserves and so we're saying, well, we have to, A. Get back on par, B, put some reserves back in place and.
And the salaries are going up.
And this is how we're doing it, that was their answer.
But the problem is to get all those services that they provide to us. Independently would cost us an arm and a leg more. So we, we about between a rock and a hard place, aren't we?
Yeah, so I just grumble and vote yes, or what do I do?
Exactly, well, you grumble and you vote yes, because for us to pull out of that organization would be so much more costly. To obtain the services if we could even get them timely.
I'm not trying to be disagreeable, but I would say maybe. What I would say is, I, I haven't looked, I haven't seen any of the numbers, so I'm saying this without hard numbers in front of me, but. It may be worth a bit of a, just a. Just to look and see if there are alternatives, there, there may not be, we're very happy with the service source gives the community. Well supported, all of that is great, we actually pay more for the GIS system and support than we even do for membership, by the way. That's how tied in we are electronically and we've invested.
And those are some of those user fees.
And we've invested huge labor in updating GIS over this last year, so that's an important tool for us. But what I would say is, when we get those numbers, it's worth potentially some closed door strategy on. Options at least, um, you happen to have a meeting coming up this week where that would be appropriate to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, I totally hear you, okay, that's good.
Question if I can, have we somewhere along the line on sewage treatment plant information to the public expressed? That with all the grants that we've got, we're not looking at a tax increase or.
I had written a newsletter, if you remember way back when. And I had told them that we had secured the funding and that it would be. No impact on that tax bill. But that we could not publish yet. Black and white, because we are not given the opportunity to do so yet.
Even today?
The only thing we can do is a five million, that's all.
Because I'm, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm. I'd make a motion, we take a fifteen minute break.
All in favor? But Counselor Grant, I hear you, I really wanted to write something this past week. But I'll ever stand, I find myself, oh yeah, but I cannot say that, oh, but I cannot really say that.
People are coming to me saying.
Vin.
Yeah, motion to reconvene all in favor? Thank you.
Are you doing this letter first or are we moving on?
Oh, you guys already talked about it.
Are we doing the county letter or are we moving on?
We already talked about it.
Yeah.
We did.
We uh.
Moving on.
We we have to move into confidential uh. Close session.
I make a motion to go in closed session.
All in favor? Thank you.
I'm just letting everyone know I.
Okay.